Let us call to order the -- what's the date, 10th? 10th day of March meeting of the Woodland Park Planning Commission. So, call to order and roll call.
Thank you. DeVoe?
Here.
Watson?
Here.
Hartsfield?
Here.
Hisslop?
Here.
Henlund?
Here.
Probst?
Here.
Scanlon?
Here.
Schrader?
Here.
And Standard?
Here.
Everybody is in attendance this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Rowley. Shall we -- the audience join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is the approval of the minutes of January 14th. Anybody have any questions, changes, additions, corrections?
Motion?
Motions? Motion to approve by Marty Probst. We need a second.
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same side. Motion carried. Public carries. Now, both of the items on the agenda tonight are quasi-judicial. So, in the case of disclosure of ex parte or conflict of interest, if has anybody had any relationship with the applicant otherwise known as the city?[125.64][125.64](Laughter) Any other communication that might bias or predetermine the outcome? Anybody? Okay. If that's the case, we will move on to the first case, which is -- I'll read that. In the minutes Fountain Creek Safeway Reach FHDP 16-001, request for review and approval of the flood hazard development permit to install four drop structures and bank stabilization within the special flood hazard area of Fountain Creek and located west of the Safeway Shopping Center with a legal description of Lot 7, Woodland Park Plaza and Tract A, Woodland Park Plaza filing number four, containing 2.69 acres, zone plan unit development as requested by William Ospak, PE City Engineer and Public Works Director, City of Woodland Park. It's all yours.
Thank you. I'd like to start by letting you all know that in Title 20, it is the Planning Commission that has the authority to review any changes to our flood zones that are designated by FEMA. And the city has a project within the special flood hazard area. But before we dive into the project, I would like to share with you just a quick understanding of the components of a flood plain. There are -- is first the special flood hazard area is the entire width of the flood plain for the 100-year storm. And then the flood plain is divided into what's called the floodway and the flood fringe. The fringe is where it flows over usually the banks and into the area. And then typically there's a stream channel that carries most of the flow most of the time. So, these terms sometimes get a little technical and it's helpful to understand the anatomy of the special flood hazard area. So, then we have 100-year storm really means that there is a 1% chance per year that you can have that storm. The other thing that's important is what's called the base flood elevation. And that is the height of the flood as it comes through the channel and it's based on the elevation as it flows down through the terrain. So, that's a little bit of terminology. And now we'll look at the existing conditions of what we refer to as the Safeway Reach. Just north of the Safeway Plaza is the new Trail Ridge Townhomes. And this is one of their seven buildings that is north of the area where recent improvements have put the 100-year storm within a culvert. Both the main stem, main channel of Fountain Creek and the east fork of Fountain Creek now have outlet structures just south of the Trail Ridge area. And there is a drop structure that these both flow into. Right here, there's a concrete, really big concrete structure that maintains the level of these outlets here. So, this is the beginning of the south of the Safeway Reach. And then I'm going to turn around and take the photo looking due south. And you can see this is that big concrete barrier that holds the sediment back. And below that, the channel has really eroded out very extremely down to Aspen Garden Way. And so, the proposal is to add four drop structures in this channel that will control the elevations of that base flood elevation as well as protect the banks so that it won't continue to erode. This photo was taken behind Safeway. And when Safeway was built in 1997, some improvements were done to the channel, of which there was a drop structure that was put in just above the new bridge or the culvert. There used to be what was called a Texas Crossing on Aspen Garden Way and you wanted to certainly avoid those. The flow just went right over the road. So, the developer of Safeway was charged with installing this box culvert, putting in this drop structure just above that box culvert. And right now, the level of the channel is somewhat controlled down through here, but it's not as steep, so it doesn't erode as much as it does north of here. Here's a photo of that new bridge or the bridge that was put in in 97. It has, because of the drop structure ahead of it, it has stayed fairly clear of sediment. Below the bridge is this lower photo, which shows how large and ripraped the channel is. And this is within Teller County. It's no longer within our jurisdiction. So, this is the last portion of the reach within the city jurisdiction to improve. And our city engineer, Bill Ospak, is here this evening to answer any questions you have about the project. Here is the flood insurance rate map that the section that we're speaking about is circled in yellow. And the blue shows the limits of that 100-year flood plain. This is an aerial of the project from a bird's eye view. Up on this side, the right side of the photo, will be the first drop structure and then the second one, the third one, the fourth one. This is the existing down by the bridge, which will not be changed since it functions fairly well right now. So, these improvements have all been designed with plan and profiles. You can see that the drop structures will change the elevation of that base flood so that we will be doing what's called a letter of map revision to remap this channel once these improvements are done. So, this is the first one that's just above the bridge. This is the existing drop structure. And then the two in the middle. And then the one at the top. And these will have very large boulders with grouted riprap, they call it, so that they'll be very secure in place. And this project should be bid here shortly and then start work this summer. There is also in the plans, the erosion sediment control and seeding plan. According to Title 20, a seeding plan, erosion control plan is required. And so, this meets that requirement. So, our recommendation this evening is for you to approve the flood hazard development permit application for the city to install these four drop structures and bank stabilization within the special flood hazard area for Fountain Creek from Aspen Garden Way north, about 1,250 feet. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer questions or the applicant can answer questions.
Bill, anything you want to add as an applicant?
(Inaudible). Sally, you did a great job of giving you an overview, but we're prepared to answer any questions you might have.
Questions to either by the group?
Sally, who owns the property and the land? Is that city-owned?
Yes. Thanks for asking that. Yes, the city does own the property. This channel was deeded to the city back in 97 when the Safeway project was done. And then the Snow Performance also deeded a portion of his property to the city so that all of this could come together very nicely on publicly-owned property.
And the other question is, we've got some temporary construction roads and staging areas. Those get removed and resupped, landscaped with whatever materials?
Yes, they do.
Thank you.
Marty?
Yeah.
Do you have your hand up? These drop structures will slow the flow of the water down, is that correct?
No. Actually, the drop structures accelerate the water, but they do it in a controlled fashion because what we're doing here is reducing the overall slope of the creek channel from this existing grade control structure to this existing grade control structure. Right now, the creek is unstable because it's too steep. So, we're going to flatten out the channel between those two existing structures. And how we're going to do that is flatten the slopes between each drop structure and then drop the water down through these drop structures, which are grouted boulder, riprap drop structures. So, they actually accelerate the water, but they're a stable structure to do that. So, instead of going down a ramp, the water's going to go down a staircase. And we have four stairs. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it still sounds like it slows it down. But anyway, is there any plans by the county to do anything between there and say behind Walmart?
Not currently. But overall, the water velocity is reduced between the two existing grade controls. But at the drops themselves, and maybe we're tied just to semantics, at the drops themselves, the water actually accelerates.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking about.
It slows down.
Overall, the velocity, average velocity slows down.
And then downstream, you said it would have slowed down compared to what it would be without these structures?
When you say-
Below Walmart and so forth, it would be slower than it would have been without these structures.
Well, if I could just clarify your question, when you say downstream of Walmart, do you mean downstream of Aspen Garden Way?
Yeah, on past that way.
Beyond Aspen Garden Way, the velocity is going to remain what it is today. We're only addressing the average velocity in the Safeway Reach.
Okay. Once we cross Aspen Garden Way, that's county?
That's county and the flow velocities are what they are today.
Okay.
Is that as steep as the existing, the one that you're leveling on?
Similarly, yes. Yep. And there will continue to be erosion and degradation, and degradation zones down there as there is today.
Yeah, I know that's not part of our concern probably, but in the big picture it is.
It absolutely is. And that's why the county and the city have been working together for several years. And the county is currently -- well, let me just step back. The city just finished our citywide stone mortar master plan, a two-year effort. And we included that reach below Aspen Garden Way, between Aspen Garden Way and Walmart. We studied the stability. We came up with some recommendations. And so, we have a conceptual plan, what it's going to take to stabilize that. The county is now taking the same consultant and taking that same approach downstream of Walmart all the way to the county line. So, the two government entities are working together to stabilize Fountain Creek in the long term. So, we are working together and we've actually contributed, the city, a significant portion to analyzing Fountain Creek and what it's going to take to stabilize that, but realizing it's outside our jurisdiction.
With all that water that has come over the banks down there by the Wishingwell Motel and that area there, as I recall, the problem has always been the county doesn't have funds to be able to work on that. They've never been able to do that. They've got a conceptual plan, but they've never had sufficient funds to work on it.
Well, they're developing a conceptual plan now.
Okay.
And you are correct, funding is a big driver. These projects are expensive. They're very expensive.
Yeah.
So, what the county hopes to do is to develop a plan, a stabilization plan for that reach of the creek below Walmart, down to the county line, see what it's going to take to stabilize it. And then they, along with the property owners, can then go after some different funding sources. But it'll probably be a combination. I don't want to speak for the county, but I believe that's the story. It's going to have to be a combination of the county and property owners working together because there are some funds available for property owners through different-
Federal funding like we did or state funding, like you had, help you behind there.
Yeah. The project upstream of this one, the culvert, was funded with a FEMA pre-disaster hazard mitigation grant.
Okay.
It was a $2.2 million-
That's what was done before Trail Ridge.
Yes, sir.
To solve that.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
This is pretty exciting stuff because, you know, we're going to now finish up taking care of Fountain Creek within the city limits here. And for what parts remain, we have a plan, we have a comprehensive plan. So, it's something I think we can all be very proud of as being stewards of the headwaters and good upstream neighbors. We're doing our part to take care of Fountain Creek and the water quality issues.
I can imagine fish ladders and freshwater salmon going up there.
I don't think so.[1047.16][1047.16](Laughter) Any other questions?
Just a quick one.
Yes, sir.
You've got a landscaping plan of sorts here with a low grow mix and everything. After you put that down, should there be a really heavy rain that washes all that away? Will you replant the seed and so forth around that area?
Well, we have a couple of different measures. We first put down topsoil. And on the appropriate slopes, there's erosion control mat, which helps prevent that and/or mulching and those kinds of things. For most of the rainstorms, that takes care of that. It prevents that. Hopefully, the grass comes up, but it takes a couple of years. We've in the past, if there's warranty issues with the contractor, we have required them to come back and reseed those areas.
Okay.
But if the storm is so extreme, we might have to go to some other measures to do it ourselves or pay somebody to do it.
Okay.
But we usually do have a warranty for that.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Commissioner.
We will now open public comment. Is there a big list?
I have one, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Carr?
Aquatic Center.
Oh, you're the next one. Bear in mind, all right.
I do have a fluid mechanics degree, so I prefer with the-[1155.16][1155.16](Laughter)
Seeing nobody else, we will -- did you want to speak about something? Joan? Did you come in or we're just listening, okay? Either way, you're more than welcome. All right. We'll close the public comment for now. Well, we'll close the public comment. We don't have any rebuttal to deal with, I don't think. Any final questions? Anybody? Okay, then we would encourage a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the Fountain Creek Safeway Reach FHDP 16/001.
Second. We have a motion in a second. What do we call for the question?
Thank you. Watson?
Yes.
Hartsfield?
Yes.
Hisslop?
Yes.
Henlund?
Yes.
Probst?
Yes.
Scanlon?
Yep.
Schrader?
Yes.
Standard?
Yes.
And DeVoe?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to hear the sound of equipment out there this summer. Will that be done this summer?
I share both.[1226.66][1226.66](Laughter) We've discussed some of the design issues and we've got to get out on the street and see how bids come in and all of that.
Thank you. And thank you for your service here. When does our, when do we depart?
The end of May.
The end of May. Well, I don't think it'll be done before that. So, you can come back and come to the ceremony. Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the second item B, the Woodland Aquatic Center, Sub 16-001, request for review and approval of a minor subdivision located in the northwest section of Section 19, township 12 South, range 68 West of the Sixth Prime Meridian, Teller County, Colorado, to create one lot for the purpose of constructing an aquatic center with a physical address of 111 North Baldwin Street, Woodland Park, Colorado, containing 2.10 acres in the public semi-public zone district as requested by David Battery, City Manager of the City of Woodland Park.
Thank you. I'm going to begin by sharing the aerial of the site that's proposed for the new aquatic center. And outlined in yellow is the lot that is being carved out of the school's property. The school owns a little bit over 42 acres of land on their campus. And this is a little bit over two acres for the aquatic center. And you can see that it is located just north of the bus loop and to the east of Baldwin Street, to the south of the student parking lot, and to the west of Panther Way. You can also see the location of Midland Avenue on this site. The surrounding properties include the daycare, some storage units, a single-family home. And also on this aerial, I have drawn in the proposed detention ponds that will be uphill or upstream from the aquatic site. These will function to detain that stormwater runoff that would be created from the hard surface rooftops and asphalt that will be constructed on this site. To the south, we have Gateway Elementary School. And then the administrative offices and the high school to the east of this tract. So, that's an overview of the two-acre site that is being subdivided. And that is this evening is the final plat for this subdivision as a minor subdivision. Wanted to share the zoning map so that you can see the 42-acre tract that the school currently owns is zoned public semi-public. And then going, starting at the north, there's a variety of different types of zones around this area of town, including neighborhood commercial. There's a multifamily urban. These are the Aspenwood condominiums. There's multifamily suburban up in Forest Edge. There's also some single-family suburban. A PUD tract to the south. To the west is community commercial, a little bit of urban residential. And then further west is the central business district. The proposed zoning will stay the same. A recreational facility is a permitted use within the public semi-public zone. The existing conditions on this site is fairly unimproved. This first photo is taken from the corner of Midland Avenue and Baldwin Street on the southwest corner of the tract, looking east. And it's basically an open area. Then from the eastern boundary, looking west, a set of old tennis courts used to sit in this site. There was also a basketball court. To the north is the student parking lot. A small portion of that parking lot is going to be demolished and repurposed for the aquatic center. The surrounding properties that I reviewed verbally are shown in the photos with Baldwin Street, the daycare, and the storage units to the west, to the southwest are more storage units. And then the bus loop and Gateway Elementary School. To the east is the high school and admin buildings. And then to the north is the student parking lot. Further north is offices and the Aspenwood condominiums. The final plat is fairly technical, straightforward in terms of surveyor's work and language that goes on the final plat. So, this has been reviewed by staff. And I know you can't read that, but you all received the plat in your packets so that you could take a look of the signatures for the surveyor, the owners, the certificate of approvals, the notes, and property information. The second page is the exhibit that specifies the specific surveying of this two-acre tract and shows how the surrounding properties join the streets and the school property. So, very straightforward with final plats. This is the site plan at this point, actually the landscape plan. I've outlined the boundaries of the plat in yellow so you can see how the aquatic center fits onto this site and is a developable portion of property that is being subdivided. In looking at the findings for the compliance to the code, Title 17.24 and the design standard 17.40 are what we look at carefully. First of all, the plat information is drawn by the surveyor. It is reviewed for accuracy and appropriate easements. The utilities department, public works, as well as outside utilities department like IREA, Century Link have all looked at this. They're comfortable with the proposal as is with the plat information. It also meets the purpose of these subdivision regulations in creating this 2.1-acre site. It's an adequate buildable area. There's be minimized excavation. As far as accommodating modes of travel, both pedestrian and vehicular travel will be accommodated. Pedestrians, the sidewalk system will be all connected for this site. We've also had a traffic study, a comprehensive traffic study done. Currently, the traffic number of average daily trips on Baldwin Street are 4,761. And this project is presented, projected to generate 331 average daily trips on weekdays. And then with the most of the use on the weekends, 425 average daily trips. That's one vehicle coming and going. So, that has been studied and adequately. I'd also point out that there are going to be improvements to Baldwin Street for a dedicated left turn coming southbound so that folks who are turning into the parking lot will not back up traffic. And there will be- And there will be also a pull-off so that there's a right turn lane as well so that that will not impede traffic as well on Baldwin Street. We look at the site considerations and this site is suitable for subdivision and development. It can be addressed for drainage, grading, utilities, and landscaping. Street frontage is important and there's 228 feet of frontage on Baldwin Street which also intersects with South Avenue to the north, Midland Avenue right at the corner of this property, Pike's Peak Avenue further south by Gateway Elementary, and then it all ties into Highway 24. The easements, as I mentioned, have been looked at and are acceptable. The final plat has a 10-foot easement along the north as well as along the east. There's a 15-foot easement adjacent to the bus loop and that includes not only utilities and drainage but also public improvements because it includes a sidewalk that's on this south side. And then on the west property boundary, we have a 25-foot easement primarily because there will be a new culvert, a large culvert that will be replacing an undersized 36-inch pipe. Now there's going to be a six-foot wide and three-foot deep box culvert that will handle this runoff down Baldwin Street. So those are the easements that are proposed. As far as a stormwater easement, there are no water courses per se like Fountain Creek or designated water courses. The off-site detention is going to happen uphill and north of here and there will also be the upgraded culvert. So again, this property is developable as far as the drawing for the 2.1-acre plat. Therefore, the recommendation is that the Planning Commission move to recommend that City Council approve this plat. It will move forward to City Council with your recommendation next Thursday, March 17th. Be happy to answer any questions.
Sally, you went into some detail of what, how it's gonna be developed, you know, what amenities are being provided, the street improvements. That's not under our review tonight, is that correct?
The details of those improvements are reviewed through the site plan review. I needed to share those with you in order for you to determine that this parcel is developable. But no, the details of those improvements, you have an opportunity to be able to come into the planning office and in fact, this evening, we've given you the administrative notice of that and anybody in the public is welcome to come in and take a look at what is being proposed for the overall development. Through next week is the deadline.
Likewise, the traffic study is not under.
Correct.
So all we're doing tonight, all controversy aside, is approving or disapproving the subdivision?
Correct.
Period.
Correct.
That's all that's in our purview.
Got it.
It doesn't mean we don't ask questions that aren't, but that's just the way it works sometimes. Sorry.
Well, that's why I wanted to make the point.
One of the things that I have brought up more than once, and it's probably not within this purview, is that if we put a dedicated left-hand turn lane where the kids are gonna go into their parking lot area, is that what you're talking about or is it another one?
No, sir. It's going to be the dedicated parking area for the aquatic center.
Okay. Okay, so it's the next one down. So there'll be two left-hand turn lanes there that first, that short one that's there now by Lake Street, just after you get past that.
That's correct.
Are there any sidewalks contemplated for the west side between Lake and Get to the High School where all the little kids walk down to the elementary?
Right now, there is a proposed sidewalk on this west side past the storage units and in fact, we met with the owner of the storage units to determine the driveway access points because right now that's a total opening.
And then it'll go up to Lake Street?
We're hoping, we're hoping we can finish it up.
The problem is, the school system has eliminated all the crossing guards except one set there because of budget constraints. So where these small children walk to the elementary school, the crossing guards, two out of the three, are no longer there anymore. And a sidewalk would sure make that safer if you find it in your heart to do that. Okay, that's all. Like I said, without the purview. Anybody else have any questions?
Yes. In looking at the permitted uses for this particular zoning, I was a little bit confused on the designation of this as an amusement recreation area under C2 versus the health and sports club designation. In looking under the uses of the health and sports club designation, it seemed more appropriate of a classification than the description for the recreational facilities. Maybe you could elaborate on why it's under?
Sure.
recreational facilities?
Yes. This recreational facilities include swimming pools in the definition and this is a public facility. This is not a club. The health and fitness clubs are membership-based. Although the pool may have a membership program, it is a public facility that is open to the entire public. It's not a club.
Okay, I'm a little confused. I, when I looked up online, the reference to amusement, recreation, and entertainment activities, swimming pools was not specifically indicated.
I believe it's in the definition, if you'd like me to go to the definition. In the matrix, Ken, it's not there. It doesn't say swimming pools.
I looked at the definitions and I would like to clarify that point.
Recreation facilities means a recreation facility or activity provided as an accessory use to a residential, community, or neighborhood either for public or private good such as tennis courts, swimming pool, recreation center, skate parks.
Well, I think Section 1806-036, amusement, recreation, and entertainment activities, which is the same nomenclature used in the chart, does not list swimming in that definition.
We have slotted it as a recreation facility.
So what is the difference between the two? I'm still confused on that issue. Between a health club, sports club, versus recreational facility, it appears to me that the functions are basically the same and it's just a matter of management on how it is operated.
And we choose the best fit for how it is operated and how it's functioning. And to us, this is a recreation facility for the general public. It is not a private club privately operated.
But it also allows to be open for the public?
Yes.
If there's a fee charge?
Yes.
And I'm assuming there's a fee charge to enter the facility?
Yes.
And I know some scenarios, in the past, the pool would be operated similar to a YMCA which might have an annual pass. You pay a membership, you come in and go as frequently or infrequently as you care. And so in that sense, it becomes a club.
This is not a club. A club, a fitness club, is privately owned and they have memberships in order for health and fitness. This is a community recreation facility.
Which functions the same. So can you clarify what, why? The major issue is that the health sports club designation is not permitted within this zoning and that a recreation facility is.
Yes.
And so I'm confused why one's allowed and one's not based on whether you have a membership card or not.
A club is typically a commercial venture, so it's not typically slotted in a public semi-public zone. Public semi-public zones are for community recreation facilities, just like our parks and our schools and aquatic centers.
Thanks, Sally.
Anybody else?
This is not in our purview, but I just know that the students at the high school are worried about losing parking and I don't know if that's been adjusted off.
Who are, is it students?
High school students.
Yeah, but we're adding some parking in a different area for them. Even though we're taking one part, we're putting another part in.
Please.
I think that's addressed.
I'm happy, David Butterby, City Manager, I'm the applicant. I'm happy to answer your questions even though they're outside the purview of what you're doing tonight. This has been pointed out. If you take a look at this location, recall Sally said we were removing some of the parking that was here. Can you see the cursor? There were 30 spaces there. We're adding 34. We are removing 30 spaces. What we've told the school district is over time, as the school regrows, as they need those parking spaces, we'll be happy to come back and add them in along the eastern edge of this parking lot or even adjacent to the lot that is north of the entrance that's to the north. We've even looked at areas below the bus turnaround. There's some spots in here, so we think we can actually enhance their parking at some future date by specifically locating parking where they need it the most.
I'll tell the kids.
Please do.
Recommend carpooling? Thank you. Anybody else for now? Okay. If that's the case, we will open the public comment. Mr. Carr?
Wait it. Good evening. Val Carr, 1291 Charwest, Charwest Drive. Yes, thanks. I beg your indulgence, Mr. Chairman. I was sick for three months and been two and a half months recovering from two surgeries, so I missed all the great controversy that Pat was talking about. But I do have some hats that I'd like to put on and it's only take a couple minutes if you don't mind.
As long as you're main to what we're talking about.
Well, you're looking at a subdivision. I was, I was looking at the packet and I noticed some site plan things and one, I used to, before I came here, swim laps for a whole decade every day. And one thing I noticed, and I apologize, this probably isn't exactly your purview, but I noticed there's only three handicap spots. Myself and a lot of other people are handicapped, of course, mine's hopefully temporary, but I'm wondering, it's always a problem when you get too many handicap spots because it's a problem when you're trying to facilitate it. I'm thinking with this pool, I've been a huge fan of getting one because I can finally have low-impact swimming. I'm hopeful that maybe this is a flexibility and I don't know if there's flexible handicap spots, there's, I don't think there's any such thing, but I'm wondering if that could really be in up to five slots maybe because there's gonna be a lot of people, especially elderly people wanting to come in there to do no-impact types of things. And these are rhetorical comments. I apologize once again. The other thing I noted was something, I've heard things about US swimming requirements and we have six lanes. A lot of people talked about eight lanes. I would beg that somebody when they're doing a design, I know east of here, we've got lots of room to make this a long course, but what we've got is a short, what they call a short course, 25 yards. And I'm hopeful that maybe when we plan this thing that we don't box ourselves in and maybe think of possibly having eight lanes, long course eventually off the back east side. Anyway, I, thanks for indulging me.
Oh, you're fine.
Okay. Those were my issues that I thought, hopefully the planning, it could be looked at with handicap spots and the possibility of it. And the reason is with my engineering hat won, but with my city hat, if we get competitive swimming up here, we can, it's an tractor, it's a big tractor, especially with the long, long course things. And I know you've probably, this probably all been discussed and I should just go back to my seat, but I, the long course really can get a lot of business traffic in here, transient traffic. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. David, that brings up another question not in our purview, but I think it's, at least we can get enough press with a good headline, it would be appreciated. Sorry, my, sorry about that. Anyway, as far as the high school requirements for competition, I believe it meets that.
It does.
That's what I'm saying, as far as?
Right.
And I know you don't have an abundance of money to keep adding more lanes, I understand.
Not at this point.
But I mean, as far as it's, it's certified for what the, for swimming meets and that type of stuff. At what level, high school level?
I'm happy to answer these questions as well. If you want me to answer both of them, I can. Yes, the pool was intended to satisfy the Colorado High School Sports Association requirements for competition meets. They prefer an eight-lane pool, the minimum requirement is a six-lane pool. They prefer a diving well, we have a diving well. It boiled down to cost. We can afford a six-lane, we can't afford an eight-lane. Pool competitions with six lanes is the norm. Eight lanes is a luxury. The reason they want the two extra lanes on the outside for a meet is so that it buffers the wake, if you will, the way swimmers swim. The fastest ones are in the middle and they go slower to the outside, so they create this natural wake that's a chevron shape. And so the two outside lanes, as I understand it, were intended to buffer that. We don't have that luxury of doing that. It absolutely meets the Colorado High School Sports Association requirements for competition. We visited with USA Swimming. We too thought at one point that having a 25-meter or a 50-meter, which is the Olympic size, would be of benefit to the community. We could make money by training at a high altitude. USA Swimming has different elevation ranges for their different tiers of high-altitude swimming. The range that encompasses us is 6,000 to 9,000. So Colorado Springs and Woodland Park in the swimmer's minds is exactly the same and there's plenty of 50-meter water down in the springs. So we chose deliberately not to make it a long-water pool, but yet to focus on what we felt the community wanted, which was the 25-yard pool to support our high school swim teams.
Thank you, because that clarifies that.
And the ADA standards, Val, thanks for pointing that out. It's actually, that's a really good point. We exceed the ADA standards, the requirements. What I would tell you is that whenever you create an ADA parking spot, you have to create an adjacent space for accessibility. So if you look at, here's the ADA spots right here. You can see the three, maybe you can, maybe you can, but there's three dots here and adjacent to each of those dots is a hashed area. Those are the ADA slots and their dedicated dismount points. So theoretically, we could add one more spot right here that's adjacent to this dismount point. I'd have to check with Sally and see because there's different with requirements, but I think what I'd rather do is, is do it this way as we build it and then analyze our customer traffic to see if we need to make some operational changes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else like speak? Now we'll close the public comment. We just had the rebuttal, so we already got that done. Commissioners, final questions? Anybody? Looking for a motion?
I'll move to approve the Woodland Aquatic Center, SUV 16-001. Do I need to read? Do I need to read the entire?
No.
Thank you.
Steve second.
Hartsfield?
Yes.
Hislop?
Yes.
Penlin?
Yes.
Probst?
Yes.
Scanlon?
Yes.
Schrader?
Yes.
Stannard?
Yes.
DeVoe?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, and as I mentioned, the City Council will hear the final plat subdivision next Thursday, and then also encourage the public, if they'd like to come in and look at the overall plans, all the details, that comment period is open through next week.
Thank you. We shall go on to Item Four or Five reports. I have none. Anybody want to report anything that's happened in your world that'll affect ours? Didn't hear anything, right? Okay, Planning Director, she always has something.
Well, I just want to mention that there are three items on your desk this evening. First, you have the February monthly report, and it was a little slow in January, but things have definitely picked up. In February, we have five development cases right now, that we've seen two of them tonight that came in this last month. And we've had our first single-family home, which is going to be a parade home up on Thunder Ridge, so we're excited about that. And it is going to have a fully fire-sprinkled house. So this will be an interesting parade home to showcase what it would be like to have a sprinkled house, and our fire marshal is very excited about this. So...
How about the fire department?
The fire marshal and department, yes.
Okay.
So that'll reduce his requirements for...
Well, it was partially done because...
Apply that to Caris?
Because of their long driveway and other, being in the urban wildland interface, so they're taking the extra steps to put in a residential fire sprinkler system.
Is that a requirement in the new...
It's only $2,200? No, it's...
Because I thought we had something over so many thousand square feet, there had to be sprinkled.
No, the building code, that was waived.
Oh, you're right, sorry.
That was in one of the international building codes.
Yes, yes. But it's been exempted out. Secondly, on your table is the annual report for the Planning and Building Department. This will be shared with City Council as a whole packet for the entire city. So this is a summary of our activity. We did 279 zoning development permits last year, and then on the back page is the summary of the Building Department's statistics, which there were a total of 624 permits, building permits issued. That sounds like a lot, and it is, but most of those are hot water heaters, little electric projects, or minor upgrades to residences, primarily residential. Almost 3,000 inspections through the whole year that Regional Building Department has performed, and of all those inspections, I think we had maybe four, three or four variances, and that's all. So I think our builders are doing a good job. Plan reviews, 130. The permit valuation dropped considerably to 6 million, 16 million, sorry, down from 51 million, but that's because the 51 million had Trail Ridge and Caris' second phase in it. So the 16 million is probably more realistic for an average year, but these are the first two years that we have had full data with Building Department under our belt, so that's kind of exciting to watch. And then lastly, you have the CML magazine on your desk. It's kind of interesting this month, it's about international commerce, so do read that. We are in a global society now. And no meeting for the end of this month, our next meeting will be on April 14th.
You know, talking about that international, I was told today that RE2 has 80 international students because of Caris.
Wow.
In our school system.
Yeah, there's a lot.
Quite a few, with a few language issues here and there. But there's, they'll be short-term because, you know, it won't be, it's not like they're here K through 12. But they have 80 so far, which is more than I thought there'd be for that.
Probably double what it was last year.
Yeah, interesting. I just thought I'd throw that in that goes along with that.
And we'll adjourn to a work session.
We have cookies at the work session, if you'd like to join us. Everybody else, you're more than welcome. Anybody, if you would...